Go with the item.
The roll call again?
Yes, please, for special council.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine? Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Councilmember Devine? And Mayor Agajanian?
Present. Okay. Now, roll call, please.
Mayor, that was the roll call. I'm going to skip to number one, which is the minutes of the special city council meeting of December 15, 2020.
Excuse me, Aram?
Yes.
The, um, council chambers is coming through very faintly. It's hard to hear.
Can you hear me now, Dan?
That's better.
Can you hear me now?
Hmm.
No?
Uh, very low still.
Yeah.
Still very low.
Yeah.
So...
We'll just have to make sure we speak up.
So, everybody is hearing me?
Barely.
No, they say no, they can't hear me.
Mayor, let's move the mic.
They came, or especially said it's working. They said they can't hear me.
Well, um, I can hear you, but I have to turn my volume way up, and then when the others speak, it's, it's very loud.
Can you hear me now?
Ah, that's better, I think.
No, it's better, or it's clear? Because it's better means it's still not good.
I think it's clear enough.
Oh, it's clear enough, okay.
All right, let's try it again.
Now, what's next, Mr. Ajmey? Where we are now?
Just read the minutes of the special city council meeting in December 15, 2020.
So, did we voted already on number one, right?
No, we called the meeting to order, so now it's...
So, roll call, please?
Sure.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. Now, we go to number one, City Clerk?
Mayor, we're going to read item number three first, which has to do with...
Okay, read item number three, that's fine.
Community Development Regarding Greater Downtown Glendale Association's Calendar Year 2020 Annual Report and Calendar Year 2021 Budget for the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District. A motion to accept Greater Downtown Glendale Association Calendar Year 2020 Annual Report and Calendar Year 2021 Budget for the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District. And I do believe we have a presentation by Jennifer Heremoto.
Okay, Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Heremoto, our Acting Assistant Director of Community Development, to introduce the staff member who's going to make the presentation, as well as the representative from Greater Downtown Glendale Association. Jennifer?
Great, thank you, Rubik. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. It is my pleasure to introduce Ani Pagosian, Economic Development Coordinator, and she will be presenting the Greater Downtown Glendale Association budget. Ani?
Thank you, Jennifer. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of city council. Before your review this afternoon is the Greater Downtown Glendale Association's Annual Report and Calendar Year 2021 Budget. This annual update brought forth to you today is a requirement by Administrative Government Code. The Greater Downtown Community Benefit District, managed by the Greater Downtown Glendale Association as a nonprofit, has successfully completed its second year in the expanded district. The DJ is comprised of board of directors that represent different property interests in downtown. Members of the board include President Joseph Sidic of Investment Property Services, Vice President Raul Porto of Porto's Bakery, Treasurer Rick Lemmo of Caruso, Secretary Helen McDonough of Massage Anthe, Randy Stevenson of Stevenson Real Estate Services, Steve Sayers of GGP, and Jennifer Heremoto from the city of Glendale. The Executive Director of the Downtown Glendale Association is Marco Lamondri of New City America, and the Operations Director is Nick Lemmo. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic, the association welcomed dozens of new retailers and tenants to the district. The Greater Downtown Glendale Association also played a vital role in the city of Glendale's alfresco program, established by the city council in response to the impacts on business operations due to COVID-19. Efforts included pressure washing the sidewalks, sanitizing the crosswalks, purchasing tables, chairs, and umbrellas for outdoor dining, and distributing PP equipment to hundreds of businesses by the ambassadors. The DJ has submitted a 2021 draft budget with an estimated income totaling $1.6 million, which is an increase of about $73,000 from fiscal year 2020. Staff recommends that the city council approve the motion accepting the calendar year 2020 Annual Report and calendar year 2021 budget as submitted by the Downtown Glendale Association. I would now like to introduce Marco Lamondri, President of New City America, which manages the Business Improvement District. He will provide additional highlights, and Rick Lemmo, 2020 President of the Board, will answer any questions you may have relating to the annual report and budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Anybody is presenting any report?
You need to unmute yourself. Marco, please unmute yourself.
Just did, sorry. Um, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have a few comments, uh, looking at this year, which was an extremely interesting year. And then we have a PowerPoint, uh, to go over some of the highlights of the past year. Um, I'm not sure, um, Annie, who will be running the PowerPoint? Do you know off the top of your head? The city clerk or...?
Yes.
Yes, they say yes.
Okay, great. When we get to that point, then I would, uh, I would just ask you to forward, there's about 15 slides to show, or so. But briefly, uh, we started 2020 and our, our report last year in January to the city council, and we had no idea what the year was in store for us. Uh, we started 2020 with some major plans for beautification and placemaking, particularly on Brand Boulevard, and then looking at Central. The district had expanded and renewed two years ago, and we wanted to make sure that we had a homogeneous district from Colorado all the way up to Stalker on Brand, as well as including the area on Central Boulevard, um, Central Avenue, at least up to the Catholic Church north of the 134. We started the year with us creating our second annual International Women's Day, which was extremely successful. Over 200 people were present, uh, at the event. Uh, we worked very closely with the city of Glendale on this event. And then in March, as everybody knows, we were, everybody was pretty hard hit by the virus, more so than any of us ever anticipated. The, um, moratorium on rents, the complete closure of the economy, uh, really devastated something that we had worked very successful for in building this downtown into one of the greatest downtowns in the LA region. Uh, we immediately began working once we figured out with the Economic Development Department and Jennifer Heremoto in particular, how we can try to come back once businesses were able to open again. So we started planning in April and May, and I think that you'll see in some of the slides that we immediately worked with the city on putting the K rails out on Brand Boulevard to try to allow businesses to survive since they were no longer allowed to do any indoor dining because of the spread of the virus. We did pretty well, uh, throughout the summer, and everything seemed somewhat normal, at least within a COVID environment. And then right after Halloween, I think all of you know that, uh, the spread began again pretty radically, at least in Southern California, and then later all throughout the country. So we've had about eight to nine years to really build this up, anchored by the Galleria, as well as the Americana on the south, and moving forward, uh, up into the, a lot of the hotel district in the north, creating a great critical mass, not only of restaurants and retail, but also the walkability and thousands of new apartments that were built since 2013 in the district. And even though we had that built up over eight years, um, the district has really suffered tremendously, as all other major districts have throughout the United States. We're not sure exactly what the future holds, because we're not sure how long we'll be in this forced lockdown that only allows for, at least from the restaurant perspective, uh, outdoor, excuse me, um, takeout at this point. But I, we do want to thank the city council, uh, for taking a lot of the initiatives. We also contributed at least $25,000 that Mr. Lemmo can get into in just a second. But we've passed out thousands upon thousands of masks to the businesses within the area. We've done our best to try to ensure that people are following protocols in terms of social distancing and mask wearing. Uh, we've done what we can for, as a nonprofit corporation representing the business and property owners throughout the district. In order to be conservative, we're not sure how property taxes will be paid and the rate they will be paid. Uh, we adopted a 90% budget, uh, for this year. We've set aside about $440,000 in reserves that would allow us to work, um, rapidly with the city once things start to open again, and we can try to promote people coming back, uh, with the protocols as quickly as possible, once there's a massive vaccine distribution, and once the rules have been loosened up a little bit. Um, I know that, uh, nobody wants to see this virus, uh, spread like it has. No one wants to see the health workers that are the frontline workers take the hit of all this. But also, nobody wants to see tens of thousands of people be completely disassociated from work that they've done for years, all throughout the LA region, primarily in hotels and restaurants and retail. So I'd like to now walk through the, um, walk through the PowerPoint if I can, get the city clerk to put that up, and I'll talk briefly through the pictures about things that we have attempted to ensure that, uh, we can keep this place solid and working. I hope that all of you, while we're waiting for this to go up, have continued to enjoy Brand Boulevard and the business district. It still looks good, it's still clean. Uh, however, we, um, just wish a lot more businesses were able to open. So this, this is the annual report for 2020. It goes over the last 12 months. Next slide. This is the district. Uh, everybody within this district, within the boundaries of this district, pays into the district assessments. The purpose of the assessments, the south side, south of 134 is on the right. Uh, the areas north of 134 are on the north, uh, excuse me, are on the left. And, uh, everybody pays into this district. If there was 100% compliance, our budget, uh, this year would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $1.5 million. Those assessments can only be used by law for special benefits, or those services over and above what the city of Glendale is providing. And we work closely, again, with Economic Development, Public Works, as well as PD, to make sure that this is a safe, walkable district. Next slide. So this is where we left off last year. Uh, this was our goal, was on Brand Boulevard, 134 Bridge, and then followed up with the Central Bridge. We were going to put these planters in there so we could try to lessen the, um, bridge between the north and the south, make it as attractive as possible. And with these concrete planters, which we've already priced and have the funds for, we were going to create a barrier between the traffic coming off the freeway, as well as pedestrians. But I think that the more we can do things like this, the more we can bridge the gap between the north and the south. So our goal this year was to do that on Brand Boulevard. That, of course, got postponed, and we would follow up also with Central, uh, Avenue, uh, and doing that within the north and the south. Next slide. Uh, this was some examples of the International Women's Day event, which was held on, uh, ArtSec, um, Drive. Excuse me, if I get this street drive, I'm not sure, but ArtSec, uh, Plaza for Promoting International Women's Day, which we know that is a very big holiday among the Armenian community. It's a, it's an internationally acknowledged holiday. We had some great speakers. I want to thank Jennifer Heremoto for the work that she did in putting this together with a lot of the other, uh, women, as well as the board members of the downtown, Greater Downtown Glendale Association. Uh, this was the last major thing that we did, uh, of any public notice whatsoever, and this was done in early March. We'll wait and see what we can do this coming March, but, um, if not this year, then we'll have even a larger one next year, and that'll be the 30th. Next slide, please. So we continued to do sanitation. Uh, it was desert. We were able to go to the state senate right after the shutdown and make a determination through the state senator Pro Tem's office that the workers that were working in the field, uh, throughout the state of California, these workers were considered essential workers. Because at least at that point, people were not aware of how the virus was spreading. So we did as much sanitation work as possible, wiping down trash counts, uh, pressure washing the sidewalks, and trying to make sure that all touchable areas were cleaned on a regular basis. Next slide, please. Same thing, our pressure washing continued. Next slide. Next slide. And then we hit March and April and May, and this is just, you know, for those of you that have seen Brand Boulevard, develop over the last 15 years, stuff like this is devastating to see. People, the inability for people to earn an income as employees, the management, the owners of the property, the owners of the businesses, this is what our life was. And I think that we'll look back on these years and just say, this was a, a year that we want to forget. Next slide. These are other examples of just the complete shutdown. Next slide. Same thing, next slide. Uh, next slide. And then we worked with Jennifer, and we came up with this, um, model. Now, you'll go throughout Los Angeles and other places in the state of California, where there is outdoor dining, and the traffic is probably nowhere as near as intense, or with the, um, frequency of vehicles as Brand Boulevard is. We knew that we needed to create safe areas so we could separate the pedestrian, excuse me, from the ongoing traffic from the people that, at that point, were eating outdoors. So we initiated the alfresco effort. Um, the city was able to secure a lot of these K rails and bring them out almost immediately at the beginning of June. Then the association was working with the city to decorate them and try to make them look as attractive as possible and lively, to try to create some sense of normalcy, so restaurants, retailers, et cetera, could continue to operate, and then they can enjoy the outdoor environment along Brand Boulevard. Next slide. So these are examples. Our crew, uh, through the Greater Downtown Glendale Association, would monitor these things, clean the areas, put the umbrellas out, uh, provide the tables and chairs. And again, we worked very closely with the city. You can see the proximity to the cars, but we, this, this was the safest way to proceed. And we took out the parking, but I think people were able to adapt, because as we well know, there are plenty of public parking spaces in the structures all throughout downtown. Next slide. Other examples of, um, us working with the city, I think we had about eight to 10 locations that we vacated the parking spaces up and down Brand Boulevard for this. Next slide. And they were frequently used all throughout the summer, and some restaurants decorated them, as you can see on the right side. I think people were very comfortable using these areas. Next slide. We've had also issues with homelessness, and we don't blame the homeless people for hanging out here. We know that things are kind of not what they were in the past. We also know that the state released about 15,000 prisoners, uh, due to COVID and the spread of COVID within the prisons. But there was really no follow-up as to where these prisoners went, and this is not to imply that anybody here is a prisoner, but it just exacerbated the state of the condition in which people that might have lost their places to live, or people that were just looking to survive, uh, increasingly saw a Brand Boulevard as a place where they could sleep, and they could eat, and they could, you know, go on with their lives. But this did bump up a lot. Um, we weren't used to this, but I think that our, our crews have attempted to accommodate them. We don't argue in any way with the homeless. We realize that their plight is very difficult, and so we just try to accommodate them and work with them to the greatest extent possible, and work with PD on this issue too. Next slide. We still tried to create our, you know, our seasonal displays and make people feel as if the area was somewhat, um, like it was the previous year, and these have been extremely popular. But it was right after, I think, Halloween and then Thanksgiving, when the virus started to spread radically. As for, was predicted by Dr. Fauci that there would be a second wave or a third wave, and as you all know, that Southern California is deep into this third wave right now. Next slide. And the same thing with the toy soldiers. We did this at Christmas and during the holidays, again, to try to encourage people to come out. Uh, it was good that people were still able to go out and shop, but it was not that great that they couldn't sit down and enjoy the restaurants, either outdoors or indoors. Next slide. Next slide. And we worked closely with the Alex, at least on the marquee. It says, "We are all challenged, yet with strength and joy and togetherness we will endure," and that was something based upon our ongoing support and contributions to the Alex Theater, that we worked with the Alex Theater. We want to send the message as much as possible that this will end. We will get somewhat back to normal. Hopefully, every business will come back. We can't tell you how many businesses will not. But we're just trying to do whatever we can, uh, in order to have people survive and then enter 2022, ideally, in a, in a good, strong position, and bring the district back completely in the next few years. I think that wraps up our PowerPoint, and then I would ask that if the city council has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer those questions, or I know that Mr. Lemmo is also present, and he could answer those questions too.
Thank you, Marco, and thank you, Greater Downtown Glendale Association. Is there any question from Marco? Okay, uh, may I have a motion for this?
Wait, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brotman.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to, um, make it, ask a question and make a few comments. Have there, Marco, thanks for your report, and thanks for doing everything you can to keep spirits up over this tough time. Um, have there been any, um, major casualties, permanent closures, uh, or what, what are you anticipating? I know, you know, a lot is unknown, but what are you seeing?
Councilman, I, um, and I think Rick can add to this too. I'm in touch with restaurants, uh, or actually cities all throughout the country. You know, Portland expects 30 to 40% of their restaurants to close permanently. New York City is looking at 40 to 50% of them closing permanently. Boston, Chicago are in the same situation. San Diego, uh, is going to, I think, probably look at 20 to 30%. So we don't know what the outcome is, because, for example, we don't know which restaurants have not been able to pay rent. So we don't know, once, once the rent moratorium is done, you know, what, what will they be able to work out together? We're not privy to that.
Yeah.
So I think that we'll know, and we were talking to Jennifer about this this morning. I think we'll know a lot more in April or May as to which are the permanent closures. And hopefully, those people are get, able to get back on their feet in some way, and we're able to have that restful space, um, you know, come back in some other form. So I can't specifically answer your question in terms of the damage, but I think we all know that the damage is going to be pretty severe statewide.
Okay, thanks.
And I, uh, I can, I can make some comments, uh, on this as well. Um, first of all, there is no way of knowing right now who is closing permanently versus who's closing temporarily. And the reason is mixed. For example, I'm just going to use one. Starbucks, uh, for a short period of time, closed every one of their locations. It turned out, after we did a little bit of an audit, that Starbucks had closed locations because of COVID exposure of some of their employees at certain locations, other locations where traffic was down, or locations they really do plan on closing permanently. It's a mixture. I will tell you this. We have not seen a statistic anywhere less than 30% of permanent closures. I'm involved with other business improvement districts, and across the board, it is leveling in there right at about 30% of closures. Our assumption is as much as 30% will not come back. It has a lot less to do with rent as it does paying for goods, services, and most importantly, employees. When an employee is not receiving money from their, their job, and there's also no government backfill, they're really forced to look for another living. There are people at restaurants you're all familiar with in Glendale and in LA that were earning a really great living. And because those restaurants were closed, they're now out earning whatever they can earn. You know, maybe they're working at a Home Depot or a Walmart or something like that, when they were doing, you know, 80, 90, $100,000 a year at Michele's Restaurant in, in, uh, Universal City. So that is, that is the problem. The other thing is, uh, we have seen what's known as a domino effect. When you have restaurants that are closed, and, and we should all understand that now that there's no outdoor dining, okay, we cannot count takeout business as a replacement for a restaurant being open. Once a restaurant closes, the first category that's impacted negatively in a big way... We did a little survey and saw that when, and I, I don't know whose mic is on, but it sounds like you're trying to vacuum the, the floor while we're talking here. What we found out in Pasadena, when they were open for that very short period of time, their retail went up and ours went down. People shop where they eat. That's, that's a big deal, and a lot of people do eat out in Southern California. So we should, we should keep in mind, there's a benefit to restaurants being open. In regards to the specifics of our district, um, I want to say that the, the restaurants are a big catalyst for us. But one of the largest catalysts for Glendale in general, and certainly the district, and why we su- support the Alex Theater so much, is live entertainment is a wonderful catalyst for business in the district. So now that the live entertainment is suspended, combine that with the restaurants, you have to ask yourself, other than a pleasant walk, why would someone come to downtown Glendale? And, and also, we should keep in mind, folks, they're being instructed not to come to downtown Glendale. They're being instructed, uh, to stay within their homes, especially people who are my age or older and may have comorbidities. So I think you can see how this domino effect or this snowball gets larger and larger and larger. And I hope that gave a little bit of an answer to your question, Councilmember Brotman. Um, and, uh, and I also know that the, uh, the city, which has a little bit more of their, uh, their thumb on the pulse because of, um, sales tax revenue and so on, uh, was going to, uh, be issuing, uh, a report to you with maybe some more specifics about Glendale in particular. Uh, I remain available for any other, uh, questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Lemmo. Um, Mr. Kasakian?
I had a couple other, um, I wanted to follow up on that, if I could. Sorry, I was just on mute.
All right.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, and again, I want to thank you for the alfresco program. I think it was great. Um, I just do want to mention, though, that I know we were disappointed with, um, the, that area in front of Carousel and Panera. Um, pedestrians could not pass through there safely. I know I had to, you know, walk into the street, and that was avoided everywhere else. And, and, um, I know from speaking to Phil Lanza fame, you know, the city went out multiple times telling them that they needed to be compliant. Um, they didn't do it, they were cited. Uh, you know, you, you're a business improvement district. I know you don't control all the behaviors of, of all your, you know, of all the businesses in the district, so I'm not, you know, hitting you on it. I'm just saying that, um, I hope as we come back in the spring, and I do hope we will come back with outdoor dining, you know, once this current, you know, um, wave that we're in dissipates a little bit, you know, I hope that everybody can be cognizant of the fact that pedestrians, you know, we need to, we need to set up in such a way that pedestrians can make it through there. And maybe we look at some parking areas or some behind, you know, behind the restaurant spaces or something. But, but everybody does need to know that they, they have to be compliant with, with these rules.
Councilmember Brotman, we completely understand what you're saying. Uh, that is, first of all, it is a frustration. Uh, it is a relatively small frustration. What's larger is what, what we saw with some of the restaurants that didn't want to, uh, force people. I'm, I'm sure that's not the right word. sure that's not the right word, but require people to wear masks. You're absolutely right. We have little, if any jurisdiction. I think the best way that we may be able to handle compliance in the future is not only the, the city's ability to cite people, but maybe what we do is we don't provide them with the backup on tables and umbrellas as we've made available to everybody else, if they don't stay within their zone. And that's about as far as, as we're able to go, considering.
Well, let's, let's work together on that then, as we open up again in, in the spring. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kasakian.
Councilmember Kasakian.
Thank you. And thank you, staff. Thank you to DGA. I know these are very difficult times, and I don't envy the position that you're in, given some of the mixed messages and changing guidelines and laws that we're all having to deal with. I do want to make a suggestion that I know that during the holiday season, the decorations that we have up bring cheer to the community. But if we can use the banner polls after this to promote some of those guidelines that we were just referring to about wearing masks, and some of the other public health safety needs that we have as a community, perhaps our banners can be utilized, and the DGA and the city can work together on a program to raise awareness and raise consciousness about the ongoing pandemic. So that would be one of my suggestions.
Can I comment on it real quick, just to let you know what we need to do? First of all, I think it, it, it's a, it's a good suggestion. There's, there should be no limit to the number of times we try and educate people on the very basic needs to protect others and protect ourselves. That being said, we are able to use the banners at our expense to promote business in the district. However, what we can do is work with the city, the people, if it's a public health or a, a, issue like that, we need to work with being able to fund that somehow. We've got personnel, but they, they have to deal with, the dollars that we have set aside are for the promotion in the district. So we even note that the mask that we provide to people, our logo all over them. And we're only for the benefit of people attending within the, a restaurant within the district. So we, we'd have to work with the, the Economic Development Department and, and Jennifer Ani to see how we can get that funded and get that done. But I do know that we do that for Rotary and other people throughout the year. So we can certainly use our personnel to help with that.
Thank you. Is there any other question, Mr. Kasakian? Or you are done?
Yeah, speaking of that logo, Mr. Lemo, I noticed that we're still using that swirl that is a bit dated. So hopefully, we can carve out a little bit of money out of this marketing budget and promotions budget, maybe update that logo because it is a little passe. I, I don't know. Even the city has abandoned that ill-begotten swirl concept. So hopefully, we can update that in the future. I know it's not a top priority, but it would be great to see. In terms of-
That's a good suggestion. We can get that done probably by the end of the first quarter.
I think one of the things that would be also great is that, you know, it's something I've noticed, and I'll bring this up again, is there has been an uptick in graffiti. I'm sure you've noticed it. I'm sure your merchants have noticed it and members and our residents have noticed it. Again, some area where the city and the DGA can cooperate and perhaps start a program, an active program of graffiti removal in the spirit of a, a broken window approach to making sure that our downtown is clean, not just power washing the sidewalks, but making sure. I mean, I've seen some graffiti placed on buildings and places where, honestly, astounds me how people have gone up there, but there's definitely an uptick in graffiti around the city, and I've noticed it in the downtown. So that would be one suggestion. In terms of Carousel, I do know that the owner of Carousel, like every other restaurateur in town, was struggling and did what they could to hang on. I think one of the main issues there, to Councilmember Bratman's concern and to others that may have brought it up, is the location of a, the bus stop, which is directly in front of where their patio is. And I'd like to make a formal request and, or suggestion, hopefully I can get a second, for staff to look at where to relocate that bus stop to perhaps an area where it's not directly in front of that restaurant patio area, because we've seen how popular patio dining can be. And there's a number of businesses, including a gym and Goodwill store just down the block, which would not be too much of an inconvenience for people to relocate a bus stop to. It would just be right across from, as far away as just one crosswalk. So I'd like to make that request.
I would second that.
I'd second that. Councilmember Devine.
And, and with that, those are just some of my thoughts on this. Again, you know, we feel your pain. I know these are just words, but as individuals, as, as residents of this community who come down there and frequent the businesses in the downtown, as well as the Montrose Shopping Park, we'll be hearing from soon, we are trying to do our best with what limited resources we have, just as you are. And I thank you all for your efforts. Thank you, Mr. Lemo. Thank you, Mr. Lamondri, and thank you to staff.
Thank you. I would like to just answer one, or make one statement on the graffiti. We have had, there's no doubt there's been an increase in graffiti. We have had a 24 to 48 hour rule that we try and attack graffiti. I will tell you why that has taken a short-term, lower-level priority. As other businesses have all been impacted, including the city, we've had quite a few people impacted with COVID. And so what, while our employees are impacted with COVID, we have brought in people from other districts and all to focus on the initial basics. As they all become healthier, because we're reasonably certain that once they get COVID, they're kind of over the hump. Combine that with the fact that there are also vaccines, I feel really certain, especially that Marco's hearing this now, that we'll, we'll renew that focus on graffiti should not be much of a problem, because we're, we're getting very close to full staff right now.
Thank you. I think we have other issues to look into. Thank you, Mr. Lamardi, Lamondri, Mr. Lemo, and staff for all the information. Now, I want to entertain a motion for deciding.
I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bratman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
I did want to make a few comments, but in the interest of time, I'll just vote yes on this.
And Mayor Agajonian?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. And sorry, I didn't give you the chance. However, next item is Montrose Shopping Park Business Improvement, Mr.-
Item number four.
Yes.
Community Development Regarding Report, Montrose Shopping Park Business Improvement District Annual Work Plan Budget for Calendar Year 2021, Motion to Accept Montrose Shopping Park Association 2021 Budget, A Motion to Accept Montrose Shopping Park Association 2021 Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Golani.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Hiromoto, our Acting Assistant Director of Community Development, who will introduce staff member making the presentation, as well as the representative from the Montrose Shopping Park Association, Mr. Ordwigeun.
Ms. Hiromoto.
Great. Good afternoon. Thank you very much, Mr. Golani, and members of council. I would like to turn it over to Economic Development Coordinator, Jackie Sales, to make the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Today I come before you to recommend approval of the annual budget for the Montrose Shopping Park Business Improvement District. We've appointed the Montrose Shopping Park Association as the advisory board to manage the district. The advisory board consists of Andre Ordwigeun of Copy Network, Gigi Garcia of It Takes a Village, Jeannie Bone of Casa Cordova, Corey Gahalva of Hostolitos, Kim Kelly of Merle Norman, and Kenny Grayson of Grayson Toontown. As presented in the report, the Montrose Shopping Park Association has had some challenges during the 2020 calendar year due to the pandemic. They initially established their budget, estimated their budget for 2020 to be $510,000. Most of their income generating events were canceled and resulted in a 37% revenue loss, bringing their revenues to approximately $321,000. Due to the current pandemic situation, and county ordered their 2020 calendar year proposed budget, has been reduced to $305,000. Over the, over the year, they canceled their Arts and Crafts Festival, their car show. The Harvest Marsh Market continued, but it was scaled back. So they're looking for, hopefully, a better year. Today, we have Dale Dawson here to give you a quick update on their 2020 budget, kind of a reflect back on that budget, and then an update on what they have planned for the 2021 year. So with that, I will turn it over to Dale Dawson.
Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Staff. A lot of unknowns are in this budget. A lot of it is hope, and some of it is assumptions. But there's a lot that we don't know. We're a very event-driven BID, and we have had iconic events that have survived. Not just survived, but have brought thousands of people to town for decades, and we've had to curtail almost all of them. The two that we intended to continue to budget and, and retain were the ones that are the most driven toward safety in a public arena, such as an Arts and Crafts Festival, which is three blocks of outdoors vendor booths. We can reconfigure it for social distancing. We can do whatever we have to do. We just hope that by June, we can actually pull it off. We tried to pull it off last June. We tried to move it to September. We eventually canceled it altogether. I have a number of vendors that are more than anxious to come back to this event, and it is the largest or has been historically the largest outdoor street event in the city of Glendale, being a two-day event. I hope we can do that in June. I hope we can bring the car show back for July. The car show is also structured in such a safe manner with proper distancing and no crowding. There are other events, however, that draw a massive crowd. Halloween Spooktacular is off the plate for the foreseeable future. It brings approximately 15,000 people to town in a four-hour window in three blocks, and there's no way to control a crowd like that. So we tried to tailor our revised event planning to be that which is, first of all, safe, and second of all, financially sustainable. And we are hoping to also, at some point, drop in our ever-popular Wine Walk if we get to the point with restrictions from COVID and, and, and things that would actually make it work, where we could do it again. So we don't have a date. We've got, we're calling it a floating event. It is in the budget, and we hope to be able to do it. We'll see. We don't know. We've retained the budget for all of the holiday lighting program, which we feel, at the very least, a visual was very important to, to, just to maintain a good spirit for the town in these difficult times, and it has helped. So the holiday lighting budget, and hopefully next year, a tree lighting. Hopefully, next year, we can bring back the musicians and the bands, and Santa Claus can stroll without a mask. Who knows? We don't know. But we've left sufficient chunks in the budget to bring those things back the minute they're viable and to move on them quickly. Meantime, what we're concentrating on right now is continuing the visual with the tree lighting, and we're scaling, obviously taking out the Christmas elements, but keeping the lights lit, keeping the town looking as bright as possible. It is hard to do in a-
Oh, we froze?
Hello?
Everything-
We lost, Mr. Davos, we lost. Okay, I guess we lost the picture, too.
Dale, Dale's still there. The picture.
There.
Can't hear him.
If I just, good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
And councilmembers, my name is Andre Ordwigeun. I'm the president of Montrose Shopping Park Association. Just to say a happy new year and healthy one to everybody. And I just want to thank you for your support. It's, I can't even quantify to how important your city of Glendale's support has been and is for Montrose Shopping Park Association, for merchants and for community. And hopefully, we can continue working with you, trying to bring back the importance factors of the existence of our merchants and go forward from here. And hopefully, Dale's going to be able to come back and explain the, and show the, our budget, go over the details, and we'll hopefully be able to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ordwigeun. Is there any question from the Montrose Shopping Park Business Group?
A comment, not a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Najarian, it's, the floor is yours. I'm sorry for the last time you didn't get the chance.
It was getting a little bit long.
Okay.
So Andre and Dale, I, I do want to thank you for holding the, the shopping parks together despite all the COVID issues. And the Alfresco dining was, I think, a great hit. I mean, it was, was something that you, you see in Europe, you know, where people are out on the sidewalks and spilling into the streets. And it's just unfortunate that that second surge came and, and cut it all back. I'm, I'm looking, as some of my colleagues said, we're looking for the day that we can reopen all that. And I have to tell you, it just didn't feel like Christmas this year without the tree lighting and without the, the parade and the carolers and the fake snow and all that. So I'm really hoping that the businesses can just hang on tight. We're hoping that the COVID vaccine gets distributed far and wide, and we can get back to a normal way of doing business. So, I mean, keep up the good work. I know the budgets, how can you, how can you do a budget in a time like this? It's completely speculative. But it's the, it's the hard work and the camaraderie and the effort that you're putting into it that's keeping, that keeping it afloat. So thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you. Is there any other, Ms. Devine?
Thank you. Thank you. I want to reiterate what Councilmember Najarian said. I was just recently doing my grocery shopping, and one of the gals said to me, boy, it wasn't Christmas without the Montrose Parade. So it was missed. And I do want to thank you for lighting up the, the, the area. It was beautiful. And I, I think your, your area of business did better as far as Alfresco dining than brand and send. I mean, you really had great turnouts up there when I would drive by. So hang in there. And I, and I wanted to say the same to Rick Lemo and, and the group of the Downtown Business Association, too. Just hang in there. We're there. Any, you know, if you need anything, let us know. Let council know. Let Jennifer know. And I think we can all say, I can say for myself anyway, I'm here for you, and we're all here for you, because we want you to be successful and come out of this in a strong way. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kasakian.
Just to open everything, my colleague said, and Andre and Dale, I know it's, it's a lot easier just as being a council member to lead during times that are not as tumultuous now. But the test of people's true mettle and leadership comes out during these times. Appreciate everything that you're doing for the shopping park. And my only other suggestions would be the same ones I made for the downtown merchants in terms of using any of the poles or, or space that you have available to perhaps put out some public safety information and messages about encouraging people to wear masks, to maintain social distancing. I think there isn't enough we can do to stress the importance of it, to remind people of it. I was reading an article from a couple of weeks ago in the Los Angeles Times about the Spanish flu in Los Angeles and how the debate about wearing masks was ongoing then as well, and how there were naysayers, and eventually there was an uptick in the, in the Spanish flu in Los Angeles because people could not agree on what guidelines to pursue. It's a very interesting article. I, I suggest people reading because we see how history repeats itself. So anything you can do in that regard, and I know you're already doing a lot, I would appreciate. Thank you very much for your leadership. We hope to see you when we can be together again.
Thank you. Okay.
A comment from me, Mr. Mayor.
Miss, okay, Mr. Bratman.
Yeah, to Dale and Andre and everybody else, again, you know, repeating what my colleague said, great job keeping, you know, keeping some life going in the area. I- Um, I, I want to ask the same question, um, that I asked, um, for, uh, the Downtown Glendale Association. That, do, do you, do you know of any, any, uh, permanent casualties at this point, um, especially on the restaurant scene, but anywhere in, you know, any of the retail shops, any of the kind of, uh, long, long-lived, uh, members of, of, of the district that, that look like they're gonna go away or is it still a wait and see?
Councilman, if I could address that, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, I'm back. I'm sorry, I lost my internet connection and it's just been very frustrating. We, we've had two casualties, but neither were long-term. In fact, they were very recent additions. We had, uh, a retail clothing store open up just as the pandemic closures were hitting back last spring. They never fully recovered and they're now in a going out of business sale. We had another restaurant that opened up in the 2200 block, again, right at the same timing and they had to call it quits almost right away. Other than that, we don't know who is permanently going to go away. There are a lot of people that are taking this time to remodel. There are a lot of places that are shuttered and papered over, but there's no indication specifically that they're going to just, you know, fold up their tents. So we don't know yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and one more thing, I, I want to, um, be an equal opportunity critic on this, but, um, the, um, for the most part, you know, the, the Alfresco Dining was really well-designed, but I, I do have to say that, um, the area around the Black Cow Cafe, I mean, was kind of, they were a victim of their own success. They had so many people coming that it just blocked up that whole segment and you could not pass through without being, you know, just squeezed in between the waitstaff coming and going and all the tables and, and people waiting to get tables. So it, good news is that there's, there's definitely demand, but the bad news is we have to figure out a way so that we can get people safely through that, that are walking past. So I hope again, like I said, with, uh, with, with the Downtown Association, you can work with us, figure out some mechanism to, you know, allow for the, uh, the tables somehow, but, you know, um, in a way that people can still get through. And, and I also hope, you know, that after the pandemic, we can keep the spirit of some of this because I think it's something that people like. And I've been hearing from a lot of people like, I hope this doesn't go away after the pandemic. We would, we, we really enjoy this kind of whole Alfresco feel, um, especially up in, up in Montrose. It's just so conducive to that.
Thank you. Okay.
Again, Councilman, just to address your concern, I, just real quickly, the, the board has been very much aware of the Black House situation, is working very closely with the ownership there to make sure that we mitigate that problem because it has been a problem, you are correct, but we're on it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jackie Sales, thank you. And Mr. Downs and Mr. Ordobekian, thank you for coming and giving us the information. And now, uh, do I have a motion for approving this item? May I have a motion for this item?
I'll move the item.
Oh, do I have a second?
Second for me.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes, good luck.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajunian?
Yes, now we go to item two, right? All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, uh, Mr. Golani.
Yes, Councilmember Divine, uh, I believe you need to recuse yourself from...
Yes, I do. I need to recuse myself on this item.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Agenda item number two is Community Development Regarding Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center of California. A, Motion Adopting a Stage Two Design Review: Consistency Determination for the Revised Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center Project. B, Motion Adopting Findings in Support of and Approving a Parking Reduction Permit Associated with the Construction of a New 50,820-Square-Foot-Foot Museum While Not Providing the Required Number of Parking Spaces. C, Resolution Approving Government Code Section 52201 and 53083 Summary Report. D would be Introduction of Ordinance Approving the Amendment, uh, amended and, uh, restated ground lease between the City of Glendale and Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center of California.
Thank you. Entream City Manager Rubik Golani.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Hiromoto again for a presentation on this item as well as, uh, introducing the Armenian American Museum's team and, uh, those team members who will be, uh, making a presentation as well.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Jennifer.
Excellent. Well, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Uh, I understand that we have a full agenda today and, um, we also have many people on the, pardon me, um, on this call. So if at any point I'm taking too long, uh, no hard feelings, you can ask me to please speed it up. So we are here today to discuss the Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center's proposed revised scope and ground lease based on their recent design. You will be asked to take several actions today, uh, including a motion adopting a stage-two design review, consistency determination, an introduction of ordinance approving the amended and restated ground lease, a motion adopting findings for the parking reduction permit, a motion, uh, excuse me, a resolution approving an economic development subsidy report, and finally, a presentation by the Armenian American Museum, uh, and their team, including Executive Chairman Burj Karapetian, who you will hear from later today. Uh, we also have the entire museum team and their consultants on the line and they will be making a more robust presentation about some of the technical elements of the presentation at the conclusion of staff's report. I will also mention that this has been a team effort and also on the line and available for question, questions are the city's negotiating team, Philip Lanzifame, Gillian Van Miden, and Mark Berry. By way of background, the future site of the Armenian American Museum is a 40,000-square-foot portion of the nearly six-and-a-half acres Central Park Block at Brand in Colorado. It is in the DSP Civic Center Zone where a museum is a permitted use and to the north is the Downtown Central Library, to the west, you have Parking Lot 10, and adjacent is the Masonic Temple. The City Council has already seen and approved designs, a ground lease, a variance, and a CEQA exemption for this project. Back in July 31st, 2018, council approved, uh, the following. It was a three-story building, 59,800 square feet, a parking garage that would be three levels, semi-subterranean, and a 262-space parking garage. As part of this, uh, council also took several discretionary actions in connection with the museum project, including approval of a stage-two final design submission, approval of the standards variance, allowing required zoning, uh, excuse me, required loading to be partially off-site, a determination that the museum is exempt from CEQA, and introduced an ordinance approving the ground lease. I'd also like to mention that on June 4th, 2019, so nearly, nearly a year later, council was presented with a schematic design for corresponding improvements to the Central Park Block and approved the grand step schematic. This design increases open space within the Central Park to 97,000 square feet from 47,000, incorporates the museum project with the Central Park's public use, and addresses concerns over the potential loss of green open space. Since 2018, the Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center has also taken steps to implement components within the ground lease. This is, has included launching a fundraising campaign, hiring a design team and exhibition, uh, and plan, uh, planning firm and contractors. They've also completed a parking review and parking study, which we'll get to later today. In August of 2020, the museum team reached out to the city with three requests, in part due to the, their further due diligence that their design team had completed. These requests and updates included a refined architectural plan. What they were looking at doing is maintaining the core elements of the program, but right sizing the overall project to meet the museum's budgetary goals. And again, the museum will get into more detail about their, uh, design plans. There is also a request for a priority plan check. This was due in part because they did receive funding from the state and there is an expectation in timeline, uh, to, to spend some of those dollars, um, at, by a certain timeframe. And then third, the request to waive permit fees totaling $671,000. These requests are ultimately, um, why we're here today and require council approval. In the next few slides, I will go ahead and address, uh, the stage-two design, the ground lease amendments, the parking reduction, which I will hand off to Milka Toledo, our senior planner, um, and also address the other required reports, including the economic development subsidy report, as well as addressing CEQA. Uh, so regarding the stage-two and the key revisions, today the council is going to be asked to make consistency determination findings regarding the revised project. The big picture is that the project is now smaller. The footprint remains the same, but it is now a smaller building at 50,000 square feet, uh, compared to 59,800 square feet as originally proposed. It's a shorter building, uh, now it's two stories versus the three stories. There's less parking, which is something we will get into more detail with regarding the parking reduction permit. Uh, now it's being proposed as a one level versus the three level. And there will be increased floor space. Uh, it will be 25,000 square feet compared to the originally proposed 15,000 square feet. The ground floor will now feature classrooms, office, shop, and a demonstration kitchen, which were previously on a, a different level. And as you can see in this image here, there is a, um, there is a hole similar to the MSB building, uh, right here on the City Hall campus. In order to accommodate for that reduced, uh, the reduction from the three stories to two stories, they have, um, shrunk that, the size of the hole and that is why that ground floor space is now larger. There are some other, um, images, including a video that the museum will share that will also better illustrate that. Regarding the architectural style, that remains unchanged. Um, it's still designed in a modern contemporary style and the rectangular mass stays the same, although again, the height is reduced by about 20 feet. And the loading area also remains the same on the western front edge on Lot 10. The stage-two design submission, uh, this again was approved by the city council in July 31st, 2018 without conditions. Due to the revisions that have been presented, the city council is now being requested to make a consistency determination for the updated plans. Staff has determined the stage-two revision, revision is in substantial conformance with the approved stage-two design, as the proposed modifications are focused on a reduction in the building's size, height, and the number of subterranean parking levels, and does not alter the design aesthetic or materials or other design features. The next item for council's consideration will be the ground lease, which is necessary due to the requests that the museum had, um, submitted. The previous ground lease terms will, uh, or excuse me, there, there are many, uh, previous ground lease terms that will remain the same and these are things such as, uh, the actual lease term, which is a 55-year with four 10-year renewal periods, the ground rent, which will be $1 per year, uh, prevailing wa, wages, and the requirement that there is a Central Park Facilities Management Committee meeting, where that will include the landlord and tenant to establish, um, and meet quarterly to set programming activities. Uh, but there are five areas, five key areas that have been amended. The first is the scope, uh, incorporating the previously presented design modifications. Uh, the second is addressing the request for the expedited plan check. Uh, the third is, uh, the, um, two-phase permitting. In the previous ground lease, it did call for two phases and, uh, and that's what we had identified within the construction, uh, terms, but this amendment now clearly delineates the timing of permitting. And, uh, an additional request is to waive the fees as we had discussed. Uh, the city is not charging for defined permit fees, including building plan check, building permit, and development impact fees. A, another, uh, major update to the amended ground lease is the elimination of the garage component. As you can see here, um, in the revised plans, the elimination of the garage component airspace parcel under the Central Park Block, which is indicated in red, um, it will now be reduced and it will now have, uh, the 80 onsite parking spaces instead of this 262. Now, this request to eliminate the, the, um, the garage component also triggered the need for a parking reduction permit and I'd like now to turn it over to Milka Toledo, senior planner, to introduce that discussion. Milka?
Hi, thank you, Jennifer. Good afternoon, members of council, city staff, and all those present on WebEx. Let me start with... The new 50,280-square-foot museum and cultural center requires four spaces per 1,000-square-feet of floor area. Based on the total floor area of the building, 203 parking spaces are required for the use. The project will provide 80 parking spaces onsite within a semi-subterranean parking garage. A parking reduction permit is requested to allow the construction of the museum without providing the required number of parking spaces onsite. As proposed, the project will be deficient 123 parking spaces, which essentially is a shortfall of, um, what and why the museum is requesting a parking reduction today. Next slide, please. A parking demand analysis for the museum project was prepared by JB Associates. They are the traffic consultants for the project to determine the adequacy of 80 spaces for the museum's operations. Based on the museum's projected daily, weekly, and monthly programming and associated attendance, the parking demand required for the use is based on areas that are active and will generate attendance by patrons such as the exhibit halls and special events. The analysis considered three separate scenarios from a baseline daily museum-only exhibit-based attendance, museum-only attendance plus weekly, monthly public programming with 100, up to 150 visitors, and museum-only attendance plus special events, and that would be one to two a month with 150 or up to 250 visitors. Next slide. The analysis determined the parking garage capacity could be increased to 115 spaces with valet, considering 20% of visitors would use ride-share programs or would be shared trips already utilizing available public parking and 1.5 persons per car. The analysis determined that 80 spaces would provide sufficient parking for the baseline museum-only and museum-only exhibits plus public programming with 100 visitors. The proposed 80 onsite spaces can be increased with a valet service to add another 35 spaces, bringing the total to onsite space to 115 with that. Other scenarios, museum-only attendance plus complete public programming with 100 to, or up to 150 visitors. And in addition to musei, in addition, the museum can extend their valet operation to the nearby, um, marketplace parking garage, where the museum can utilize an additional 39 parking spaces, bringing the total to 154 spaces. That would be museum-only attendance plus special events, again, one to two a month with anywhere from 150 to 250 visitors. Or excuse me, 150 to 250 visitors. When the museum onsite parking plus on and offsite valet is combined, the museum's parking demands for all scenarios up to museum-only attendance plus special events, again, one to two a month, um, up to 150 to 250 visitors can be accommodated. Next slide, please. This is the parking plan, which represents 80 onsite parking spaces with the 35 valet spaces onsite. with the 35 valet spaces onsite. Regarding findings of fact for parking reduction permits. GMC Section 3050.04OD requires that the city council may grant a parking reduction permit if the city council makes the following findings of fact. The parking need for the land use is not as great as for similar land uses or the parking requirement for the land use established in the zoning code is greater than what will be needed by the land use. Two, the intent of the parking regulations in compliance with all other applicable provisions of this chap- of the zoning code chapter is met. And three, sufficient parking would be provided to serve the use intended and potential future uses of the subject person. Staff recommends approval of the parking reduction permit. Again, that would be case number PPRP 2017 964 with standard conditions included in the motion. One specific condition would be, number one, that is specific in addition to all the standard conditions, that would be specific to the museum. And in addition to the 17 conditions outlined in the motion, the museum must also adhere to Section 17.7 of ground lease, which limits smaller evening events to 150 people two per month and commence no later than 5:00 p.m., limits larger evening events to no more than 250 at one per month and commence no later than 5:00 p.m. And prior to larger evening event, tenant must make prior arrangements for 39 onsite parking spaces. And any event exceeding 250 visitors must require seven-day notice prior and prior approval utilizing special event permitting process. And with that, I will conclude my presentation. If you have any questions, I am available to answer them.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Milka. So just a few more slides here, and I'll turn it over to the museum team. There are a, there will be some final act or one final action item that the council will be asked to take today, which is regarding the economic development subsidy report. These government code sections requires that this report be prepared and considered at a council meeting and during a public hearing. And the report summarizes key points in the agreement and potential economic impacts. Just a few highlights detailed in the report. Job creation, this is expected to create 250 temporary construction jobs and 10 full-time jobs once completed. The estimated construction cost is $36 million. The value of the site is just over $1 million. And the public purpose of this is to promote an understanding and appreciation of America's ethnic and cultural diversity by sharing the Armenian-American experience with the public. And that report will be required to have a resolution of approval and is attached as Exhibit 4. And just a final note, it's within the staff report. The previous project was determined to be exempt and the exempt from CEPLA. As the proposed design changes and reduction in the total square footage for the building will not result in significant environmental impacts, it has been determined that the same categorical exemption is applicable. And with that, that concludes staff's portion of the presentation. We have one more slide on alternatives. But unless the city council has questions at this point, it may be appropriate to turn it over to the museum team, who will have a brief presentation and a video showing the different views of the museum. And the presentation will be kicked off by Burj Karapetian, executive chairman of the Armenian-American Museum, followed by Shant Sahakian and Adam Alajadjan. And please note that the entire museum team is here if you do have technical questions relating to any component of the presentation that you have seen or will see. So if the council and mayor deems it appropriate, shall I turn it over to the museum team?
Is there any questions from the staff? Okay, let's go to museum, Mr. Karapetian.
Thank you, Mayor Alajadjan. And thank you for the presentation by the staff. I believe they've done a terrific job at summarizing the points that need to be covered. I do want to start by saying, why, how did we get to this point? I think it is probably on the mind of everyone. But the reality of the created by the pandemic and tragic circumstances that are of particular specific impact on our prospective donors of Armenian descent has been one of the factors. The second one were recommendations of our professional consultants with experience in development and operation of cultural venues. And the third was a much higher estimated cost of building a parking structure for the museum building. So this has led us to rethink and find the right sizing of this venue that will be a cultural venue that will enrich our entire community of Glendale, educate the public on the Armenian-American story and empower individuals to embrace cultural diversity and speak out against prejudice. If we can, are we going to go through the slides? I'm not seeing it on the screen, but am I missing it online?
I will be putting it up right now.
Okay. So if you can go to the fourth slide. So I want to thank the staff for its, we've had sometimes very fruitful and interesting discussions and to explore ways that we would be able to move forward on this. So we appreciate that they were willing to challenge and question things that we had been suggesting. And we believe we've arrived at a compromise that we all can live with, that will be beneficial to the museum and the city for this cultural venue. So I think you need to advance further to get to our presentation slides. I don't know if you're-
Actually, Autumn, if you stop sharing, I do have the presentation on my screen. I believe I can pull it up.
Okay, great, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. So this project has been an evolving project, and we are enthusiastic that were you to approve the request that we have, we will proceed with groundbreaking this summer and begin the process of developing this cultural venue for our city, as well as the Grand Steps Park will be developed by the city. So combined, it will be a terrific addition to our city. So if you can keep going on the slides. Yeah, one more. One more. Yeah, so our board of trustees consists of 10 organizations, regional organizations that are philanthropic and charitable and cultural organizations from the Armenian-American community. And they have been guiding this for the past several years. And we're fortunate that they are serving as the stewards of this project. Next. And next, or back at the beginning? No, the other way. Okay, so the programming will include exhibitions, if you can go to the next ones. So in addition to the permanent core exhibition, we will have close to 6,000 square feet of temporary exhibition for artists and entities within our city and the surrounding areas to utilize, to provide exhibits. It's almost twice the size of the current gallery exhibit that we have at the Brand Library. Next. Programs will include demonstration kitchen lectures, performances, musical performances, film screenings. And we have a small auditorium for approximately 150 to 200 people that will serve for that purpose. Next. We have a learning center that is based on the first floor. And that was part of the recommendations. Instead of leaving the first floors open, as Jennifer had presented it. So we brought in almost 10, 12,000 square feet from the third floor to the first floor, brought the demonstration kitchen learning center so that it is more easily, readily accessible to the public. And when Aram and Sakho go through their presentation, you will see how that flows. Next. We will have archival facilities on the spa- at the location, but we will also have off-site archival space because we intend to serve as a depository for artifacts related to different Armenian culture as well as others. Next. And there will be events such as the demonstration kitchen and conferences and corporate events, but all within the guidelines that are being proposed of the realization of the limits of 100, 150 people in attendance and requiring special permits if we are going to exceed 250 or 250 individuals. Next. And I will turn it to Shant Sahakian, our executive director, to talk about the executive team and continue from here. Shant?
Good afternoon, sir mayor, council member, city staff. Pleasure to join you all. We've assembled a team of professionals with broad experience in the museum and cultural space. And it's with their expertise we've been able to advance our project forward. So I just want to take a moment to briefly introduce some of the consultants who've joined us. On the design side of the house, we have Aram Alajadjan and Sakho Marcosi with Alajadjan Marcosi Architects. They're a Glendale-based architectural firm, and they're leading our design team. For construction management, we have our construction manager, Bob Goodwin, who brings a breadth of knowledge and expertise in construction management and most recently served as the construction manager and owners rep for the Broad Museum in downtown L.A. Tony Birchler with Zoner Company. They're leading the facade design work for the building. And they have a long list of iconic projects they've worked on, including the Peterson Automotive Museum in Los Angeles. And we have Jono Bogdavian with JB and Associates. And they're Glendale-based traffic engineering consultant. And they conducted the museum's parking demand analysis. Next slide, please. We have our programming team, which is a team that's going to grow over the coming year. Leading that, we have Carolyn Harris with Carolyn Harris Consulting. So she's providing project management for the development of our exhibitions program and also the programming of the overall museum. And she was recommended to us by the Dallas Holocaust and Human Rights Museum, where she played a similar role successfully. And one of the teams she's working very closely with is Gallagher and Associates, Hal Kramer and Martha Almy, who's a world-renowned exhibition design firm who's working on the permanent Armenian exhibition. And they've now begun the schematic design work. And they have a long list of projects as well from the National Center for Civil Rights and Human Rights, International Spy Museum, National Archives Museum, Grammy Museum, and many more. Next, we have Bruce Wyman and Rich Cherry of Museum Operations. They're leading the operations consulting, advising on things from the museum technology, staffing, security, and much more. And they've managed operations for the Skirball Cultural Center, the Broad Academy of Motion Pictures Museum, Canadian Museum for Human Rights, and many more. And lastly, I want to thank Elaine Bailey and Rick Thomas with Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek, who worked very closely with their city attorney's office as we worked through the ground lease amendments to get us to this point today. And so many of them are here today. They'll be able to answer questions later if you have anything detailed you'd like to request. And with that, I'll turn it over to our architects, Adam Alajadjan, who will walk you through the new project plans and the new renderings.
Thank you, Mr. Alajadjan.
Thank you, thank you, Shant. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members, staff. I'm going to be very brief. I will walk you through the project very quickly. So next slide, please, if it's possible. First, I wanted to talk to you about the reduction, as Jennifer was mentioning, on the size of the building. On this slide, you can see the top red line indicates the previous project, which was approved by the city, 2018. The current project, which is 20-foot reduced, you can compare it with the next-door CBRE buildings and Adult Recreation Center, as well as the library on the top drawing. There are two drawings in here, one on the top and one at the bottom. So besides reducing from the top, there also on the envelope has been, the skin has been reduced additional 10 feet. So the footprint is the same, but the skin of the project has been reduced as well horizontally. Now, next slide, please. A parking plan. So we have a very easy access coming in from the Colorado. As was mentioned in Milka's presentation, this is almost a semi-subterranean parking where 2%, close to 2% of a ramp will take you into the parking. Easily accessible parking spaces. We have elevators that will take you up to the Plaza level or ground level of the museum. Also, it's a very walkable parking structure that you can, on the south side of it, which is on the Colorado side, either it's a wheelchair or visitors could easily access to the Colorado sidewalk and enter to the museum from the south side. Now, next slide, please. Yeah, now I want to talk about the distribution of the functions that we were showing on this project. So the, you seeing on your screen the functions that were originally placed on the building, which was approved in 2018. Now I'm going to show you how it was distributed in two floors. Next slide, please. So the ground, the first floor, which is the Plaza level floor or a garden level, we call it. And again, it centers to the grand lobby, which is on a central location. It's sort of a H-shaped plan, which on the upper east side, upper side, on the left side, you see the demonstration kitchen. The center, upper center, you see the auditorium. And then you see the support facilities, which is storages, security offices, and some employee rooms down there. On the, on the bottom side, on the left, you see a learning center, I'm sorry. It's the administration offices with a conference room and the office, operational offices. The center across from the lobby is the museum shop with a gift shop, elevator, guest elevator, which will take you up to the upper floor, museum exhibition floors. And on the park side, or which will be the right side of the bottom, would be the learning center. Now the second, and next slide, please. So mainly the second floor has all the exhibition space. The permanent exhibition is a U shape. It wraps around the corridor, which accesses to the glass elevator and ceremonial staircase. And a darker gray on the upper side, upper left side, is the temporary exhibition space area, where it's very close to the exhibition prep areas as well as the archive. So this is will be housing the changing or visiting exhibitions. That area is about 6,000 square feet, as Birch has mentioned in his presentation. On the next slide. Next slide illustrates the rooftop. Here, we're showing that the entire roof, that the parameter area would be located with solar panel systems, which will be providing the entire electricity for the building and with a grand skylight that is illuminating the atrium itself. So next slide, please. Those are some of the renderings we put it together. Now, looking from the east of the Colorado at the entrance of the garage entrance from the Armenian-American Museum, you see the staircase in a similar, designed in a similar fashion like the park elements are. So the staircase and the ramps will lead you to the main entry. Next slide. This is looking from the west to east. You can see the alley on your left-hand side, and you see the Colorado- and you see the Colorado Boulevard. So the, the fragments, the elements, the materials hasn't changed. What we were using on the original submission, which was approved, it's the same. The philosophy behind the architecture is the same. Now, if we move to the next slide, we can show you more on this. This is looking from the east side, east elevation, where the ARC building is. Next slide, please. This is looking from the north side, from the library side. You see a Grand Steps Park. We put this slide together by using the SWA drawings, which were approved after our project approval. We were trying to combine this. In a minute, we will show you the video animation so you can get a better feeling of the entire space. Next one, please. And this is showing, you know, sort of a bird's eye view from the passeo that comes from the Brand Boulevard and through the Grand Steps and leads you towards the, between the library and the ARC building, all the way to the Louis Street. You can see that. You can see the green space between the library and the Armenian American Museum. Next slide, please. The similar bird's eye views shot from the top of the, the museum looking towards the library. Next one, please. And this is a evening shot or a night shot, shows the illumination and informs, it gives you very dramatic effect, very monumental sculpture, very sculptural building. It, it basically very, is going to be a very iconic addition to our community. And, and we prepared a 3D animation, like one-minute video, if you don't mind showing us that. Please. Thank you. So we're coming in from the Colorado Boulevard. As you can see, we kept clear the lobby glazed area that you can see through the lobby all the way to the library from Colorado Street and vice versa. This is the main lobby, and a central space illuminated with a skylight above. You're looking at the auditorium wall and access to the demonstration kitchen to your left. Now we're sort of walking out of the facility. And this is the northern plaza area. You see the, we're exiting towards the garden between the library and the museum. You see the water feature in front. Now we're moving towards south, in front of ARC building. And back to the Colorado, and now we're moving from east to west on Colorado. Thank you. This was my presentation. If you have questions, we'll be happy to answer you.
Thank you. I just ask question, a simple question. The parking lot will cost 14 million? Am I right? The new park, parking structure? How much is it going to cost?
Mr. Mayor, the, the most recent estimate that we have on a, for the 80 parking spaces on one subterranean level ranges from four to $5 million.
Right. It was five million. And the building will be 36 million?
The building, our most recent estimates are slightly under 30 million. So together, there might be, you know, 30 to 33 million dollars.
Okay, thank you. I go to my colleagues. Is there any question or comment?
Mayor, I do have a caller on the line.
Okay, let's go to the callers. I'm sorry. Let's go to the callers.
Grant Michael, Grant? Grant Michael, you're live. Grant, can you hear me?
Mr. Michael.
Grant Michael, you're live. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes.
Go ahead.
First, my name is Grant Michaels. I am the president of the Glendale Homers Coordinating Council. I would like to go ahead and thank Sean Sahakian, Berge Karpetian, and the Armenian American Museum design team for speaking with the coordinating council at our meeting last night, as well as Jennifer Hiromoto and Onik Bolanikian of the city staff for providing additional information to us. The GHCC and our member associations do support the museum project and the Central Park complex. We believe that this would be a great benefit to our city. In addressing the five concerns or changes, this may be one of the rare times that the coordinating council would actually support and like the larger version of a project. The design as it's proposed, being more efficient, more complete, we do support. In addressing the parking garage component with a reduction from the 262 spaces to 80 as proposed, we have concerns that that may not be sufficient parking for the Central Park complex. Our concerns are primarily for the ARC and library patrons that are handicapped elderly and least able to park in the Harvard Garage and further parking to walk and access the Central Park. The permit fees and priority plan check, we would support following the precedents for other nonprofit projects in the city. The two-phase construction, we do support, but we have concerns about how that would impact the accessibility and the features of Central Park. We would strongly encourage that the plan be considered holistically to maximize the access and availability to all of the amenities of Central Park. In speaking with Jennifer Hiromoto, Onik Bolanikian, we are, we understand that there are different entities that are planning those projects, so we would encourage coordination between all of the different entities. In conclusion, we do support the project, but have concerns about parking and would encourage a solution that would provide more than the 80 proposed parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Okay, thank you. Is there any comment by my colleagues? No comments?
Make a comment. So thanks to Berge and Sean and everybody on the team for dealing with difficult situation and finding, finding solutions. I know there's a lot of concern in the community about the parking. Personally, I, I think that the 80 spots works with the mitigation plan with the valet and the use of the marketplace. And I think it's important for people to realize, you know, the marketplace structure is never, I think, or, or almost never at capacity, capacity being defined as 85% occupancy. This is coming out of a parking study we did just a couple of years ago. So there is sufficient parking in marketplace. It, it just requires a little bit of a walk. But, you know, we're moving, we're moving forward into a world where we're trying to encourage other modes of transportation. We're trying to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Remember, we're going to have a BRT, bus rapid transit, most likely running down Colorado with a stop right near the museum. So I think it works. I think for people that, you know, absolutely cannot walk, we have the valet option, and we have the commitments to maintain certain frequency and size of special events. And, and I, I believe that works. So I'm, I'm good with, with the parking. I did want to ask one question because we got a few letters talking about the fact that there's no onsite loading area, and, and maybe the museum team can, can address that concern. But other than that, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with everything, and I'm, I'm fully supportive. And in fact, on the parking, I really want the museum to be successful. I think that times are tough, and I, and I'm, I'm glad we're not saddling the museum with what I think would be excessive parking that probably would be way underutilized. So I think it's the right direction. But if you could just address the onsite, the lack of an onsite loading area, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any other comment or comments? Mr. Kusakian?
I'm generally fine with these changes. I know that there's a lot of consternation about the parking situation in the area, but let's not forget that there is a public city lot just across the street, across on Colorado, being utilized by one of our auto dealers currently. In addition, I think that generally the design hasn't changed much or significantly, at least from the renderings. Renderings are always somewhat problematic. I've seen a lot of renderings that don't really actually come to look like what they did in the images presented, but I'm hopeful that this will. And of course, it's a necessary cultural enhancement for the city, especially in the downtown. I also want to remind everyone who may have issues with this, that we just heard from the Downtown Glendale Association about, you know, taking up of spaces for the outdoor dining and that not being an issue because of the ample parking available in the downtown. So we have to be clear about what the message is here, and there is ample parking in that area. We are not overparked or in terms of, or there isn't a shortage of parking spaces in the downtown. And if there is, we have public property available, our city lots in the general vicinity to address that. Also, the report mentioned that there is 10 full-time employees at the museum. There's 70 spaces, assuming every employee brings their own automobile, their own vehicle, to the museum. That still leaves sufficient space for casual visitors, amount of time they spend. From my understanding, and staff can correct me, our requirements for parking for museum use is far more restrictive than in the city of Los Angeles. And if that is the case, I think that I'm fine with this reduction, and I am fine with the changes as they've been proposed. Ultimately, what I'd like to see is this project enter fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Thank you. First, I would like, after my comments, staff or the museum folks to address the, the loading dock, which I understand will be on the west side of the building. How often would that be used? How many, you know, will we lose parking on that strip between the Masonic Temple and the museum? So that, I'd like those to be addressed. My other comment really is, when I first heard about this request, I was like, no way. This is not, I'm not going to vote for this. But I did read the report by Jono Bagdanyan, a parking guru who knows the city inside and out, our former, were you public works director for a while, Jono? Or we, we never gave you that shot. Okay. Our transportation director, who knows all the parking in and outs, and whom I worked with on the Transportation and Parking Commission. So his, his report indicating that there is sufficient parking available adjacent and convenient to the museum is what, is what changed my mind. So you, you changed my mind, Jono. The other point is, on the east side of the museum, I saw in the, the video, was that an accurate to scale, you know, display of how much there is? And is it, is it our intention to relocate the Comfort Woman statue to a group of other statues or perhaps monuments? Or is that, you know, what are we, I guess this is partly for staff and partly for the museum. What, what intentions do you see, do you have for that space between? At one point, we were talking about a sister city pavilion, if you will, for museums and dedicated artwork. Is that going to happen? Is that where we're at on that? Or what's, what do we think about that? Those are my, my one comment and two questions.
Okay. Anybody wants to answer the question that Mr. Najarian raised?
Yeah, let me start, and then you can go. As far as the location of unloading and unloading, it will be on the northwest corner of the building, accessible through what is known as parking lot number 10. It is something that was approved previously by the city council. The loading and unloading of temporary exhibitions will take place from there. We're anticipating three or maximum four temporary exhibition changes on an annual basis. So it's not that frequent that it will be used. Other than that, for delivery of items to the demonstration kitchen and others will be happening there. But that's, again, a short dur, very short duration and does not require large, you know, trucks to do that. Aram, would you like to add anything to this?
Yes, yes, thank you, Berge. To answer, again, to answer Mr. Brodmann's question, you know, the alley side was approved as every business along the alley side, as well as the Neon Museum loads and unloads from alley, and the library does the loading and unloading from the alley as well. So as Berge was mentioning, the, the demonstration kitchen or other loading would be done through the van, you know, only the major trucks you will see, perhaps three or four times a year when the temporary museum is changing, you know, temporary exhibitions are changing. Now, the, to answer the question of Mr. Najarian, the Comfort Woman sculpture stays there, as it was indicated SWA drawings, which was approved by the city in 2019. So on our rendition, we're showing the location. I don't know if you noticed it or not. It's, it's almost the same location as it was before. However, it's raisin, and it's in that north-south passail that connects Colorado with the library. So it's more of a, we took from the city's direction to place it there.
Aram, if I may add, the location of the current Comfort Woman statue is outside of the area that is designated for the museum ground lease. So it falls within the purview of the city council to determine where that should go. So if in the future, as Mr. Najarian, your question is, if the decision of the city is to have an area for other statues and monuments, you know, you can choose where it's placed, but it's not falling within where our lease area ends, is.
Thank you. I just want to ask, Aram, who's putting name of the people who are on the screen, on this screen, not on this screen that we see or council members they see?
Mayor Agujanian, the individuals that are webexing, they put the names themselves. I do see one individual that has a different name, first name.
Mr. Karapetian, your first name you have to check.
Change it to Berge, yes.
That's not for you.
I did notice that.
So I was thinking, is that you or is somebody else? Okay. Anyway, that just, but it's not, public cannot see, right? Okay, that's fine. All right. Is there anything else? Anybody wants to add before I speak about this briefly? Nobody, everybody is clear, all the questions answered. Anyway, I want to congratulate. This will be nice building, nice addition for city of Glendale. But I want to be on the record also. But I want to be on the record also that if this building gonna be $30,000, $30 million or less, we are saying with 50,000 square feet, that comes to not much. I mean, it's like around $560 per square foot or less. I don't think this building, the way it is, the way I see it as a professional engineer I'm looking at, this cannot be done with that money. $28 million to put that building together. And then you have the parking also, let's say, 28 million for the building. I just want to caution that maybe you have to work harder to collect more money. Otherwise, it's going to be hard and difficult task to maintain. Anyway, congratulations and I would like to see anybody would go ahead and a motion for the, for this item. Is there any motion for this item, to approve this item?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Thank you.
And are we moving all, we have four, four items that we're moving together?
That's correct. They can be moved together.
Yes, we can, unless somebody wants to separate them for any reason.
Each one introduction.
Right. So actually, you're correct. So items 2A through C can be moved together and then we'll need to have somebody introduce the ordinance separately.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll move 2A and 2C.
2A, B, and C.
2A, B, and C.
Okay.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
So is there a second for 2A, B?
I'll second, I'll second 2A, B, and C.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine? Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Now, item?
2D. I think Councilmember Najarian introduced the ordinance.
Yeah, I'll introduce the ordinance.
So it's introduced, so.
Okay. Is there a second?
It doesn't need a second, not, doesn't it? No.
So we are done with this?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for, everybody for coming and giving us the information. Congratulations to everybody. Okay, Mr.?
Thank you very much.
What's the, thank you.
Thank you, museum team.
Okay.
Next item would be?
Next item, please.
Next item would be number five, community development regarding direction regarding the extension of the city lease of the Alex Theater, the city's management agreement with Glendale Arts for the Alex Theater and the city's lease of 116 West California to Glendale Arts. A, motion authorizing interim city manager or designee to execute an amendment to extend the city's lease of the Alex Theater to Glendale Arts until June 30th, 2021. Second, an amendment to extend the city's management agreement with Glendale Arts for the continued management of the Alex Theater until June 30th, 2021. Three would be an amendment to extend the city's lease of office space at 116 West California to Glendale Arts until June 30th, 2021. B would be resolution of appropriation in the amount not to exceed $150,000.
Thank you, Mr. Golany.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm going again to turn this over to Jennifer Hiromoto. This would be her last presentation this afternoon. Thank you.
But not?
And she is going to introduce the Glendale Arts representative.
Okay, Council, we're almost there. Thank you very much. What a great way to start off 2021. So good afternoon, evening now. This item today, we are looking for council direction regarding the extension of the agreements with Glendale Arts. On the line, we also have Alisa Glickman, Executive Director of Glendale Arts, who is available to answer any questions you may have, in addition to the Board Chair, Phil Kubel. Today, the City Council is being presented with three separate agreements for your consideration. All of these agreements are currently slated to expire on January 31st, 2021. We are considering the extending the lease agreement, extending the management agreement, and extending the office space with the current lease at 116 West California. There are three reasons why we're currently contemplating the extension of these agreements. The first is that the, there will be a requirement to have a property management, our manager to ensure our asset, the Alex Theater and its facilities are move-in ready. We are currently working on an RFP and that is expected to close on March 18th. The second is that even with COVID, there is interest in activities that remain within booking the Alex Theater, and this does enable the current operator to capture that interest and hopefully can parlay that into future revenue for the future operator. And the third is that it will be able to align holdover agreements with the RFP process as well. Again, we expect to present the proposals to the City Council in April and hopefully we'll have a contract executed in summer of 2021. This is just a brief presentation of the timeline. I think I just hit most of these points. In the interest of time, shall I just move forward or would you like me to? Okay.
Go for it.
Okay. So June 30th is when we last. When the agreement first expired, we then had a holdover agreement and that, that was put into place January 1st, 2020. On December 15th, 2020, council authorized the extension of a holdover agreement for 30 days so that we can continue negotiations with Glendale Arts on some key terms, which we'll discuss today. If we do not approve these items today, then we will just let the existing holdover agreement expire. But if we do approve it, then the term would extend effective immediately, essentially, and would extend to June 30th, 2021. On January 31st, 2021, currently, the existing holdover agreements would expire. And this is just a reminder of the current request for proposal process that is underway right now. We expect to present the findings to City Council on April 13th, 2021. And finally, if approved today, the extended agreements would expire on June 30th, 2021. This is a proposed term sheet of some of the items within the holdover agreement. This is very similar to what you had previously seen as well in previous agreement. It would be for six months between January 1st to June 30th. The Glendale Arts shall continue to perform the security and maintenance functions without the production requirements until production activities are allowed to continue by amended LA County health orders. There will be a 30-day termination clause. We are also looking at locking in the lease rate at 116 West California, that's the office space, at $2,500 per month. And there is a management fee of $150,000. We did bring this item to council and received direction that instead of the three-month timeframe that we could, or excuse me, the three dispersments, that you would be open to considering the two-month dispersment schedule at $75,000 at the February 1st, 2021, and then another $75,000 on May 1st, 2021. This slide does not reflect that. This is following a discussion from the closed session. Another important term, particularly to Glendale Arts, was this discussion of a transition period. Should Glendale Arts not be selected as the operator for the Alex Theater? The language would allow for a seamless transition. It would assume that the selection process of a future operator would extend past that proposed term of the June 30th, 2021, and would ensure that Glendale Arts can recoup its general investments and make sure their clients are comfortable with an operator other than Glendale Arts. So as a way to mitigate those concerns and still maintain the, the city's interest in keeping that timeline, these are the three terms that, that we have proposed to include within the, the holdover agreements. Glendale Arts would be entitled to a to-be negotiated percentage of the total contract for events that they book, but that occur after June 30th, 2021, if the customer is comfortable with the new operator producing the event. The second is Glendale Arts would be entitled to produce those events they book but occur after June 30th, 2021, if the customer is not comfortable with the new operator. And then finally, that Glendale Arts would agree to dispose of their personal property and equipment and vacate the theater no later than three months following the expiration date of the extension period, which would be September 30th, 2021. So with that, that concludes my report. I know that we had some additional conversation as well from closed session that I frankly am not allowed, if I'm at liberty, to present some of those, so I'll defer to Mike on that. But so the direction that we're looking for council or from council is whether to extend the holdover as presented, two, to extend the holdover with some modifications, and third, to, to don't extend the holdover, but if we went that route, the city would determine how to unwind the current contract assets and find a temporary operator. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Again, Alisa and Phil are on the line if you had any questions from Glendale Arts or I'd be happy to, to turn it over to the mayor and City Council.
Thank you. Okay, is there any caller?
No, Mayor, there are no callers.
Okay. All right, who wants to go next? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, is, is, are, is she making a presentation or she's just on the line to answer questions? Because I, I wanted to ask something, but I'm not sure if she's presenting something first.
Mr. Brotman, the Glendale Arts does not have a prepared presentation.
Okay. I was just hoping that maybe she could just speak for, for a couple of minutes about some of the things that Glendale Arts has been doing. You know, it's hard because we don't, you know, see anything visible, so we kind of get this impression that nothing's happening and that they're, you know, they're all sitting at home, but I, I, I believe that's not the case. So I just was thinking it would be good for all of us if she could talk a little bit about what they've been doing during this difficult time.
Thank you, Mr. Brotman, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I appreciate you asking that question and you're absolutely right. Even though we don't have performances currently at the Alex Theater, our staff, while reduced and working part-time, is, is working hard, not only getting federal and state grants to keep the organization healthy and viable, as 302 days ago, we shut down and our income dwindled to very little, to nothing. Because of our efforts during the summer, we were able to also bring back some film productions in the fall when film filming was allowed. We're now seeing this surge not only affect our live performances, but certainly the production schedules as well. During this time, we've really used the Alex Theater marquee to bring hope and we've got international recognition on a lot of the activities that we've been doing, both supporting our community through our wishing wall. We got international and national exposure for that. And really, we're planning for the future. Starting in February, we'll have live streaming capabilities at the theater, which really prepares the 95-year-old venue for what we believe to be the future of live performance, which is a combination of in-audience as well as virtual televised performances. So as I said, the staff has been incredibly busy and we continue to work on ongoing maintenance and preservation projects. We work closely with city staff to present COVID enhancements and changes that need to happen at the theater in order for it to continue to operate. So I think overall, our constituency and hopefully our council is quite proud of the work that we've done on behalf of their most cherished asset.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now I want to see, is there anyone, is there any from staff? I want to know if we have to clear anything on this agreement or everything is clear? We just have to go to the motion, altering 5A?
I don't know if Councilmember Najarian had an additional input on?
Can you hear me? I guess as, as Jennifer presented, the, well, I have two things. One, the payment schedule, the, the number of payments, 75 and 75 versus 50, 50, 50. I'm not very, I mean, I'm not very strong on, on either one. I think they're both about the same. I don't know if that makes a big difference to the Glendale Arts folks. I'd like to hear that. The other thing is, I would like to include in your, in your, you know, in your contract and agreement, a non-disparagement clause. So nobody starts talking bad about anyone one way or the other. So that's pretty standard in, in these sort of agreements. I'd, I'd like that to be included also.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Again, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council and city staff. We, we would, we asked for that change in the management fee structure simply from a cash flow standpoint. As we are going into the spring, we had anticipated, as I said, productions coming back in a fuller force. Now, productions are starting to slow and they're moving dates further into the future. So to mitigate some cash flow concerns for the organization during this challenging time, we had asked the city staff to make that structural change. So certainly, that would benefit us greatly.
How about on the other item Mr. Najarian raised?
The non-disparagement, you know, they just throw that in there. That just says, everybody play nice and don't say bad things about applicants or production or the city.
No, that's not, that's not a problem. Mr. Kubel and I had an opportunity to review the language. We made one recommendation that I believe Mr. Lanzafame or Ms. Benmiden is going to present shortly.
Okay.
But that's not an issue. I mean, we haven't spent 20 some odd years preserving and building a reputation, only to tear it down in 20 minutes.
All right. Thank you.
In reference to the last comment, Mr. Najarian, I, I think Glendale Arts, what they had expressed to us was what I thought I heard you say, nobody. So just a clause, a similar clause, that the city won't say anything about Glendale Arts.
Right. I mean, it goes.
Mutual, yeah, and I think that's what we're hearing. It would be a mutual provision.
Yeah.
All right. Now, Mr. City Attorney, so can I go to 5A, B, 5A, 1, 2, 3, and get the motion? Or we have something to clear?
I think that somebody can make the motion, but just with the amendments as, as referenced by Councilmember Najarian.
Okay. Anybody wants to move the items 5A, 1, 2, 3 with the modification?
Right. It would just be, it would be 5A and B.
Five, oh, both of them? All right, 5A and B, right, $150,000. Okay, 5A and B.
I will move 5A and B and with the?
Modification.
And also the non-disparagement clause.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have the item now and first and second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine? Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Glickman, and I forgot the name of the other gentleman, but I'm sorry. Thank you for coming and explaining. All right. Now, I guess I have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Well, we're going to adjourn the special meeting.
I'm sorry?
That, that's fine.
All right. So with that said, the meeting is adjourned at 5:30 PM.
And then for the council, if we can go back into the closed session for the other three items, is that a separate link? Yeah, there should be a separate meeting for, for that particular item.
To, in closed session?
Correct.
All right.